Okay, well, good evening, folks. It is Tuesday, February fourteenth, which makes it Valentine's Day. So happy Valentine's Day to all. It is just at six P. M. We're in the council chambers of the, at the city of Platteville, and I am calling the regular meeting of the common council to order. We'll start with roll call, Candace.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Here.
Todd Casper is excused. Barbara Dos.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Kathy Cop.
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda, although I will tell folks who might be listening or watching on YouTube that we are on a new system in the council chambers. So if we seem a bit yeah, off, that's why we have now three cameras in the council chambers. So there's one in the back and one on each side of the room. And you might notice in front of all of us, there are monitors that will bring up if somebody's here to make a presentation, the presentation will be there, it'll be in front of all of us. And there's also a big screen on the wall. So we thank all the city staff that were involved in getting this all up and running. We think it's a, we think it's going to work very nicely.
Thank you.
It will also enhance our ability to have people attend the meeting remotely and presenters also be able to present remotely.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda then is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. I have, we have the council minutes from January twenty fourth, the regular meeting. Payment of bills, we have financial reports for the month of January. I have no appointments tonight to boards or commissions. We have several license applications, a class B combination beer and liquor license for Seven Hills Brewing Company, Dubuque, John Ryder agent for the premises at forty-five North Second Street, which is called Bestro, Bistro Seven. And I see that Keith is in the back of the room, so that if anybody has questions about that, Keith can answer. We have a request to extend licensed premises of Nick Spar at forty-five North Second Street to include the parking lots on Third Street from seven A. M. Saturday, May sixth to two thirty A. M. Sunday, May seventh, for Derby Days, this would celebrate the Kentucky Derby. We have a temporary class B license to sell fermented malt beverages to Roundtree Gallery at one twenty West Main Street on Friday, March third, from four to seven for Drift Art, for the Drift Artist Reception. One and two-year operator licenses as were in your packet as well as a taxi driver license. We have several banner permits, March thirteenth to the thirty-first for the Platteville Fire Department Annual Pancake Breakfast Fundraiser, which will be held on.
Held on Sunday, April second, at the high school from seven to twelve thirty.
And May first to October thirtieth for the Platteville Farmers Market. Thank you, Jenna, for being here. We have street closing permits, North Bonson along City Park and East Mineral Street, from North Bonson Street to North Fourth Street for the farmers market on Saturdays, six thirty to one P. M. May sixth through October twenty-eighth, and Irving Place and North Court between Main Street and Irving Place and North Bonson Street between Irving Place and Main Street for alternate farmers market site for dairy days and the U. W. P. Homecoming parades and sweet treats on Main, again, from six thirty to one P. M. We also have another street closing permit. This would be North Third Street from Main Street to Mineral Street for Derby Days from noon Saturday, May sixth to two A. M. Sunday, May seventh. Keith, did you actually want to say something tonight? You filled out the little paper, but you don't have to say anything. But if you're, you can say something if you want.
You're okay.
Okay. All right, so we have the consent calendar. Do I have any questions or a motion or anything?
Did you, I think you.
Keith did want to say something.
He did want to say something. Some of us have beans in our ears.
Using the new system.
Yeah, Valentine's Day clock. Okay.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. I just wanted to say thank you guys for, we've been in town for over a year now. I probably have never shown my face here. I know a few of you. So we're here today, we're expanding into fine dining. We haven't done it in Dubuque yet, we're actually launching it for the first time here in Platteville. I just wanted to come up, say hi. You guys have been great to work with. I really appreciate the partnership we developed over the last year and a half. And we look forward to bringing fine dining back to Platteville, because I know it's, there's a void right now.
So Keith has Seven Hills on the corner of Main and Second.
Correct.
And now Bistro.
There's so, Bistro Seven will be where the Gina's Whiskey Lounge was.
Right. And Keith, say your last name for everyone.
You ready for it? Gutierrez.
There we go. All right, thank you.
That's it, thanks.
All right, do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
Most will approve.
The consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy to approve the consent agenda. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. So I have nobody in the audience who's asked to speak. Is there anyone on the council that wants to raise any event or anything up? We've heard about the pancake breakfast in April.
I would also add that again, the pasty sale is going on at the museums. If you go to Platteville Mining and Royal Jameson Museum site on the web, you can order, but only through Friday, so don't procrastinate.
Don't delay. Okay, and we welcome Gabe Armstrong to our audience tonight. Gabe is here, he's working on his civic, or citizen, civic citizenship merit badge. So welcome, Gabe, you could have your name and lights up here. Maybe you should suggest that to your teachers sometime, that you have, you guys be counsel for the day. That'd be fun, huh? Can make all kinds of new laws.
Yeah, I was just gonna remind that there is that Ebony Weekend going on at the college with the Black Student Union, I believe it's this weekend.
Yep, this weekend. Okay, um, reports in the packet, the airport commission report, Kathy?
Nothing, nothing further to report.
I have, I have a question too, as we go along.
Okay, you have a question about the airport commission report?
Yes. Excuse me. I'm looking at the first page here, and it talked about the option, Brandon Herbert shared the option of a heated floor for the hangar. I have a question. Is this the first hangar that will have a heated floor? And then the second question is, what are the benefits of a heated floor for this new hangar? Anybody have that information?
I think it would be Kathy, that would happen. The, the one piece that I can respond to is that they, the new hangar, they're, they, they did approve putting in the, as long as they're gonna pour the floor, they're putting the components so that it can be indoor, indoor heat. But the new hangar, the goal is to attract a corporate jet. So it will allow a prospective new tenant to have that option if they want it.
And as far as the other hangars, I might ask, Mr. Howard, do the other hangars have heat in them?
I haven't been with the airport for over ten years, but until then, I, they never did, as far as I remember.
There may be some privately owned hangars that have heat in them. I'm not sure if we, the city has more than one box hangar. This would be a box hangar owned by the airport, by the city, which puts it in a little different category than the tea hangars that the city owns. And I believe that the intent was, and I, we can come back with some more information on this, but I believe the intent was to provide a more economical way of heating the hangar and again, to attract a corporate customer.
Well, I was wondering too, what is going to be the source of the heat? For example, if they're going to be solar collectors to give the heat? Is the heat coming from propane or?
Yeah, that, that goes above my pay grade, so I can bring that back to you.
Okay, I'll move on.
Tourism Committee, Lynn?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Parks, Recreation and Forestry, Jason?
I'm nothing to add.
Housing Authority.
Something on parks.
Hey, parks.
So looking at parks, we were told recently that the pool is leaking about two million gallons per year. And my question is, how long has this been occurring as far as over the period of years? Anybody know that answer?
I can tell, it's been at least ten years.
Ten years? Okay. And then you're gonna have two companies supposedly look into this as far as submitting a proposal from each one.
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, we're tabulating, we're trying to get an estimate on winter water usage, because we keep a certain amount in there. So it might help us detect where the actual leak is occurring.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Housing Authority, Eileen? Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Nothing further.
I had something on police and fire. Let's see. I think that's underneath the report, coming up later. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, next then would be Water and Sewer Financial Report for January, the Airport Financial Report for Januar, January, a report from the Task Force on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Diversity and Equity, which met in January, and Department Progress Reports.
Okay, I have a question on, first of all, Nicola, what is meant by time and attendance system for the city staff and also, I believe, the library was listed as well. So what is that?
Sure. So time and attendance system is to automate the process for collecting the information needed to process payroll. So currently, we have several systems that we use. We do have a couple of punch clocks with time cards, the long, thin, narrow cardboard time cards that you slip into a punch clock. And then we have electronic time sheets that are completed by employees on spreadsheets and then printed and submitted to payroll. And so what we would like to do is bring some continuity to our system citywide, while also bringing it into the twenty-first century with an automated system where employees would be able to punch in from a computer, like the desktop, or from their phones, they can download the app that is produced by the software vendor that, that, that we use for accounting system and our payroll system. And so, so that will be the implementation that's currently started and ongoing throughout this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That is Ken.
Fire Department. I have a question for Fire Department. City, the county's radio tower. I was looking for a location, I found it listed underneath police, so it's somewhere, what, out on D?
The county's new radio tower, do you know where the county salt shed is? And right on, on D there? Just south of one fifty-one, kinda there, it's right there, you should be able to see it. It's up, so you should be able to see it from the road.
I see the library is not here, so my question on the library was, maybe somebody can answer this. It says on our staff news, library assistant Bailey Watson graduated from UW-Platteville and was promoted to a temporary forty-hour-a-week library specialist position, and which will end in May. Does that mean that she's terminated? Anybody answer that question?
I don't have information on that, but I can get with Jessie, and she can get back to you and give you some information.
Okay, and then the next one is, okay, this, I'll skip that one. Then another one was Police Department. My question, well, it says here on accomplishments, interviews to fill an existing police officer vacancy will be held on March sixteenth. And then it says down underneath, major objectives for the coming month, continue advertising to fill a police officer vacancy. So are these one and the same?
They are. We're accepting applications through the seventeenth of February.
And then the other thing I was, was hoping you could give is you're gonna give us a report. And this is the annual report. Would you show pictures of the police?
There are pictures.
To us, please, and could you also list by the picture of the years that they have served so far? Is that possible?
That's what we typically do.
I appreciate that. Think I'm about down to the end of questions. This is Parks and Recreation again. It says, staff completed the aligned energy tree grant application with quotes on approved trees. Approved trees are
They were.
Oak, or what?
Oh, there were some red oak, there was five different varieties. They had probably fifteen or twenty that we could pick from, so we, I don't have it with me, but we picked five that we, different varieties that are hardy here, and then we applied for those, got quotes on those. We wanted to try to also get as many as we could for the, for the grant that was, we were applying for.
Are those going to Smith Park?
They'll be going through all the parks.
Through all the parks.
Yeah, so hopefully, we're gonna get about twelve to fifteen trees of good size, and we will put them in all different variety spots.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Then we'll move to the action item on our agenda tonight, which is Resolution twenty-three dash oh-two, Community Development Investment Grant. It's a CDI Updraft Brewery Joe.
Yeah, so John Patacos has been working on the Updraft Brewery project at forty-five South Chestnut Street. And as part of that, he was working with the Main Street Program and E.L.A. from W. E.D.C. on potential funding assistance, specifically, they were looking for some grants, if anything was available. They kinda settled on the Community Development Investment Grant, which is through the W. E.D.C. and it seemed to be a good fit for that project. The way that grant program works is technically, the city is the applicant for that grant. If we get the grant, then we basically then turn around and give the grant to the applicant, the business owner. So it's really a pass-through program. The city doesn't actually have funds invested in it. It's basically just the staff time to administer the grant program. So the, the program allows for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that grant. It's basically a reimbursement program, so they have to spend the funds, and then they turn around and submit their invoices, proof of spending materials for allowable costs. To me, I turn around and then submit it to the state and then get reimbursement, and it goes backwards. So basically, it's for building improvements. It's not eligible for interior furnishing, furnishings, furniture, that type of thing. So it's building improvements only. So we would have a development agreement with, between the city and the state, and then we'd also have a development agreement between the city and, and the business owner. So as I mentioned, it's really a reimbursement, so it's, there's no, no risk for the city. It's basically just the staff time, as far as the city's involvement in it, to administer the grant. So staff would recommend approval of the grant application. Any questions?
And John is here tonight, if anybody has specific questions. But this is really about the grant application. Anybody with questions about the grant application? We did a similar grant, CDI grant, when Ruxton was built.
Correct.
I don't remember, was it for two hundred and fifty, or was it for more? It seems like it was more.
I thought it was more, but the, the, the program's changed a little bit since that time, and the match amount has changed a little bit as well.
Okay, I have a question. It says here on the first page, I believe it is, that
First page of the grant application?
No, it's, let me look here. The match, I'm trying to, it's, it's, it's a three-to-one, right?
Normally, the, the program is a three-to-one grant, but E.L.A. said that Grant County falls within a different category of funding, so that it would be eligible for a one-to-one grant match. They have, they have different categories based on their
So we must be in an economically, we are in an opportunity zone.
Correct.
So it's projects located in an economically distressed community or opportunity zone may provide a minimum one-to-one matching funds. And so we're in an, I know we're in an opportunity zone.
Okay, to me, I want to understand now, it's it's two hundred and fifty thousand you're talking about, and then there's gonna be a match by the developer.
Right.
And so how much is the developer's gonna match, half of the two fifty?
Right, so, so in order to get, it, it would be approved up to two hundred and fifty thousand, so they'd have to spend at least five hundred thousand dollars to get the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reimbursement.
That's a one-to-one.
Right. So if they don't spend that amount, they wouldn't get the full two hundred and fifty thousand.
And if they spent more, they would still only get
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand. Hey, folks, do I hear any motions?
I'd move to approve the resolution authorizing submission of an application for a Community Development Investment Grant to assist the Updraft Brewery.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Jason to approve the resolution authorizing submission of this application for a CDI grant to assist the Updraft Brewery. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
That's him.
Cop? Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, that's the last action, the only action item on our agenda tonight. So now we'll move into information and discussion. Resolution urging the legislature and governor to fix our broken system of funding critical local services. Nicola?
Thank you. So as you, as council members are well aware, from going through budget cycles and, and struggling to balance our budget annually, you understand that Wisconsin's system for funding vital local services is broken and needs to be reformed. According to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, over the last twenty years, state aid for police, fire, and other critical services has steadily declined in real dollars, while inflation has caused average costs to increase by fifty-one percent. The funding level for county and municipal aid in two thousand and three, according to the league, was nine hundred and thirty-eight point five million dollars. Today, it is seven hundred and fifty-three million. So prices are going up, but funding from the state is decreasing. During the same period, the state sales tax and income tax revenues have substantially increased, but the way in which the state shares those revenues with local municipalities has been decreasing. The decline in state support over these years has placed municipalities like Platteville in the position of having to use property taxes or special fees, or short-term budget fixes like borrowing and deferring maintenance and deferring capital projects to make ends meet. Changes needed now to revitalize the state and local government partnership and modify the way in which local government is funded in Wisconsin. We want Wisconsin to be able to compete nationally and globally, and in order to do that, we need to be able to maintain quality communities with desirable amenities so that we can attract and retain talent and enterprise, and also spur job creation. So for communities to flourish and for the state's economy to grow, state and local leaders must work collaboratively on a long-term solution for funding local government. We need diverse, growing, and sustainable sources of revenue so that we can continue to deliver the services that we are already providing, both now and in the future. Over the past year, the good news is that there has been growing support for reform amongst the state legislature, and significant work on this matter has already been accomplished in the Capitol. Last month, the governor signaled his support for reform in how shared revenues are calculated. This resolution that we're looking at tonight urges the governor and legislatures to continue the work that they are doing to reform the way in which sales taxes and income taxes are shared with municipalities. If adopted, the resolution will be delivered to Governor Eva's, Senator Markline, Representative Trainor, and to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities.
So at the last Grant County Economic Development Meeting, Adam spoke about this very thing, giving examples from Platteville. And to council members, if you get the League of Wisconsin Municipalities magazine, there was a huge article in the magazine about that, including copies of slides from Adam's presentation. Eileen and I attended the Trainor-Markline Listening Session that was held in Lancaster two weeks ago? Three, I don't know, a while ago, we went to Lancaster. And I will forward you the handout I gave them, which pulled parts of Adam's presentation and kinda condensed it, because fifteen slides are too long for some, let's just face it. And then Eileen and I went to the Novak and Markline session in Cobb and beat the same drum. So when you see our funding, you'll notice in the shared revenue that I think it's from two thousand and eight to the present time, we have hovered around two point four to two point five million. I'm going to say hovered, because on occasion, it'll be a little more, and then it'll be a little less. And one of Ken's favorite items, the aid for municipal services, which is, we submit every year to the state, the expenses that we have that are associated with fire and with police, and maybe with solid waste disposal, I can't remember, I think there are three things. Anyway, we submit those to the state as they are used by, there's a formula that shows how big UW-Platteville is and how much that is, and so we submit that. Well, they are now funding that at thirty-four percent. So if we submit a hundred thousand dollars, they give us thirty-four thousand dollars. So we, and the people that are making up that difference are the people that are sitting here and our taxpayers. So we've talked about the aid to municipal services. The other one was, I'm losing my mind.
Transportation aids.
Transportation aids. And we all know that this year's transportation aids went down by an amount, and transportation aids are actually calculated based on the amount that you were, of roads you were able to fix. And as we're able to fix less roads, because we have less money, we get less money as an aid. So this system is, is just very problematic. How's that? Broken, yeah, broken. And for those of you who have been following, the legislature is talking about one cent of the five cent sales tax going to shared revenue. They haven't talked about how it would be distributed. And the governor in his state of the state message talked about twenty percent And the governor in his state of the state message talked about twenty percent of the state sales tax, which would be one cent out of five. I don't, you didn't say one out of five. Uh, and the league has been working with, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities has been working with the Wisconsin Counties Association and with the Towns Association so that everybody is trying to push this forward together. So this resolution then was suggested by the league. Um, this is a draft. We can bring it back next time for action. And like I said prior to that, I will send you the handout that um, we had for Travis and for Howard earlier. This, and if anybody has questions, by all means ask, or if anybody wants to go to Madison and have a, and say a few words, that's okay too. Maybe we'll take Gabe along. He would like to go for ice cream.
Barb, I just have a question. Do you know what the momentum is from other communities? I mean, I would hope that everybody's jumping on this, but have you?
Ev- everybody believes that the system is broken. So that, I don't thi- I think there's pretty consistent um, belief. The whole, what will be the stumbling block is when they start to re-divide the pie. Cause then, yeah.
So that's a secondary.
Y- yeah, but every, I, I think it's pretty, I, I think it's pretty well believed that nobody believes we're in a good place.
So is there, is there a timeline?
I mean, it'll be in the budget.
But I mean for these resolutions to get to the governor's office.
Now, I mean by, I, we can do it next meeting, it'll be fine. Anything that you can do relative to uh, saying that, you know, we, we have these budget difficulties. We're going to talk about one pretty soon in terms of budget issues. Um. Yeah, I was on a league call today, uh, it, right now, because uh, the governor delivers his budget message tomorrow night. And then uh, that'll be forwarded to the Joint Finance Committee, which will then promptly say, we're not looking at your budget at all, we're going to do a budget. So now we'll have these months of argument, but at least they both have the same belief that the system is broken. Now, how you fix that, I'm not sure, but the great thing about the sales tax is it is consistent. I mean, one, one cent out of five, and hopefully it's growing on a yearly basis as we sell more things. Hopefully, you know, it's a revenue source that will grow. We haven't had a revenue source that grew before, so. I know. These are the last things you want to worry about. Okay, uh, so we'll bring the resolution back at our next meeting. And now we'll turn to our latest budget issue. Perhaps. Stormwater opportunity.
Yes.
Perhaps.
Okay, um, Wisconsin DNR issued a stormwater permit for the city of Platteville. Um, that's a normal thing for any community census of over ten thousand population. Um, one of the requirements in this permit is that we must can uh, have stormwater controls to remove twenty percent of the calculated total suspended solids over what they call the uncontrolled condition, a- as if we did nothing. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, uh, we hired Delta Three to develop stormwater management plan to see how close we were. In that plan, we were just under nineteen percent with our existing practices, not quite twenty. Um, the plan did include um, the possibility of a pond at the northeast corner of Madison Water on the high school property. Um, and if that one pond got forty percent efficiency, it would bring the city to a little over nineteen and a half percent. Um, these ponds and other practices, um, ponds and other th- practices that have been installed since twenty six for new development six, since twenty sixteen, do not count for the citywide reduction. Only practices that manage uh, stormwater from areas pr- unmanaged prior to twenty sixteen count towards the twenty percent. Uh, in the fall, uh, the DNR performed an inspection. Um, uh, we have not seen the results yet, but we would expect the DNR to note that we have yet to reach the twenty percent. Um, I asked Delta Three to redesign the, the pond to see if it would accomplish the twenty percent overall required. Uh, and basically, they're saying that if we got eighty percent efficiency, um, it would in fact um, meet the twenty percent reduction required under the permit. What this would do is manage water flowing from the north and west as far as Second Street. It would also be designed to regulate the flow of water to reduce water levels below Madison Street. But what that would mean is instead of a lot of water all at once, there'd be a little water for a longer period of time through that, through that drainage area. Uh, the design does include a fence. Um, it's not a legal requirement, but if we put it on the school district property, the school district will require it. Uh, it would have a permanent pool of water and a ten-foot safety shelf. Um, so that we can do this. Um, the reason why we're bringing this up is the school district is bidding their referendum project for up at the high school that they want to do this summer. And one of the things that they are looking at is they're looking at a bioretention basin to meet the DNR and stormwater ordinances of the city to manage the stormwater for the new uh, for the new buildings and, and sports fields and, and uh, parking lots and things like that that they're, that they're adding as part of this. So um, the bid price is being separated in the bid request in order to obtain a price for comparison. The bid opening is February twenty third. Um, they are willing to enter into cooperated, into a cooperative effort with the city to grant us an easement to have wet storm pond. Uh, the city would manage and maintain it. The district would eliminate the bioretention basin, execute Q to change order. They would install the pond during their project, pay for it upfront if the city promises to reimburse them out of our twenty twenty four budget. And they would like an answer by the, by March first. Um, uh, Delta Three did a updated cost estimate of just under six hundred thousand dollars. Right now, the school district estimates that their bioretention would cost seventy five thousand dollars. Um, as I said, they would pay for the project upfront and then we would reimburse them the difference. Uh, uh, I, there is a technicality in there, whether or not they would limit their participation to seventy five percent. If the uh, or seventy five thousand, uh, if the uh, uh, if the actual bid price came in higher than that, I will have to um, get confirmation as whether they would go beyond that. I would think so because if we don't do this pond, they would have to pay that money anyways. Um, so, um, we need to be, we need to be upfront about this. Um, you know, as far as a budget or fiscal impact, um, I, I can let Nicola go for this. Yeah, go ahead.
So we collaborated on this staff note, um, and so just to let, to give you some sense of context for what this overall spend would um, entail for the twenty twenty four budget. So the average amount of CIP funding from um, from taxes, property taxes and from city reserves from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three was six hundred and eighty eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. So that is typically what has been budgeted for CIP from those funding sources.
And that's CIP funding has paid for just Department of Public Works stuff or has paid for?
That is for our entire CIP budget.
Entire CIP budget.
Right. Now, now obviously, we, we fund our CIP spending from other sources as well. Sometimes we get grants or awards or um, fundraising for one thing or another. Uh, but the actual portion of our CIP, which is supported directly from taxes and reserves averages at about six hundred and ninety thousand. So the estimated city share for the high school pond of five hundred and twenty three thousand, nine hundred would represent seventy six percent of that average if the pond were to be funded from um, property taxes and reserves. So in other words, it would consume the majority of the CIP budget that's funded from taxes and reserves if that was how we funded the pond. Um, a portion of the cost, and this is demonstrated in the spreadsheet that was attached, a portion of the cost could be included with our annual borrowing for street reconstruction. Uh, in recent years, we have limited our CIP borrowing to the amount of levy-supported principal that has been paid off in the previous year. So for twenty twenty four, that amount is one million, three hundred and eighty five thousand. So if we followed that practice, then we would limit our borrowing to one million, three hundred and eighty five thousand um, in twenty twenty four. After funding the Jefferson Street Reconstruction Project, which is scheduled for twenty twenty four, there would be three hundred and two thousand left out of that one million, three eighty five that would be available to borrow towards the pond cost or towards other street reconstruction projects. The council could choose to borrow more than the one million, three eighty five um, to fund the entire five hundred and twenty three thousand, nine hundred pa- uh, nine hundred dollar pond cost through debt. So they, the council could choose to tack on the pond cost to the uh, normal um, debt that we limit ourselves to you. I can't recommend that because we would have to look at what that would do to our debt service requirements in future years. Um, but we could look at that. So the, the other thing that we wanted to consider was all of the um, Department of Public Works CIP items that were included in the CIP plan. And you'll remember that the CIP plan is that, it's a plan, it's not a budget. So we know that we may or will likely not be able to uh, complete all of the projects that are in that plan for each year. Um, however, it is a point of reference and it helps us understand what the needs are for the city. So after the Jefferson Street Reconstruction, um, in terms of priority, looking at that uh, list, there are three items totaling six hundred and seventy five thousand that are actually of a higher priority right now than the pond. And uh, Howard could suddenly answer any questions that you have about that. Um, during the twenty twenty three budget with BIL funds not having been awarded, the proposed Jefferson Street Reconstruction was decreased from point five one miles to point one five miles. Staff would prefer not to defer additional streets in twenty twenty four. So as far as recommendation is concerned, um, the common council will have to weigh the advantages of meeting the DNR requirement with the help of some cost sharing from the school district. And by the way, thank you to the school district for being willing to car share on this project and work with the city um, to consider being able to do this pond. Um, but this, the council will also need to, to weigh this against the many other items that the city needs to fund in the twenty twenty four budget. In favor of this project, of course, is being able to meet the DNR requirements of the stormwater permit and receiving a contribution from the school district of an estimated seventy five thousand towards the total cost of the pond. If the DNR inspection finds that the city is out of compliance with the twenty percent requirement in the permit, it is not known what the expectations of the DNR would be. Questions for either Howard or I?
So what, for the DNR permit, I kind of followed what you were saying about the nineteen, i- it's very involved, but.
Um, has, yeah, has the DNR ever given us their number?
The DNR reviews the number that, that was uh, included in the plan and they accept, they accepted the, the eighteen point nine three percent number of where we were at and is using that as our baseline to go forward to meet the twenty percent.
And they also.
Because of, because the, the D, DNR approves the methodology that was used by Delta Three Engineering. If you want more details, Dan can come up and talk about that, but.
But then they also approved that if we put a pond at the northeast corner of Madison and water on the high school property, that it would get to nineteen point five four.
If, if the pond was designed to have forty percent efficiency of removal, what I asked Dan to do, he can explain it a little bit better, but he said that if we design it with eighty percent efficiency instead of forty percent, then we will meet the twenty percent overall for the city.
And, and has there, have, has the DNR issued any fines anywhere in Wisconsin for people not meeting the twenty percent?
I'm not aware of any at this point. I'm going, I would have to, I would have to find out.
And, and Dan is saying, no, they haven't. And this law has been in existence since twenty sixteen and it's twenty twenty two, so that's
It, it was.
Years and they've.
It, it's been actually in, in effect for longer than that. Um, initially, the larger communities, the Madsons, Milwaukee, Appleton, Green Bay, they actually had to meet a forty percent requirement um, prior to two thousand and ten, eleven. And then uh, uh, we had a change in administration and the DNR was required to go back to the national standard instead of the, the s- the Wisconsin standard. They dropped it from forty to twenty percent.
So Kathy, did those questions help? I mean, I know you're ju- I've, I've been mulling this in my head since I read it.
What happens, I mean, in real layman's terms, what happens if we don't hit that twenty? Are, are we, can they, could they walk in here and say, we're shutting the city down? You can't do anything until you get this done. I mean, seriously, it's like, I mean, what are, what are potential ramifications? I mean, if we're working towards that and they have a exclusion for new development areas that don't count? Is that, did I catch that right?
My, my understanding of that is if we, if a new development goes in, it creates new runoff and so that has to be mitigated to make it a net um, zero uh, change. So the net zero change is not included in, in uh, mid, in mitigating according to the permit. It has to be mitigating old runoff, if you like, from previously existing development.
If, before there were stormwater management laws.
Yes.
In other words, and, and are the new things that are designed, designed to forty percent or designed to twenty percent? Or designed to what? Who, who decides that?
To eighty, mostly to eighty percent, but it, there's, there's different technical standards based on whether it's new development, whether it's uh, redevelopment, whether it's infill development. There, there are different standards for that. Um, but to, to answer Kathy's question, um, what would be the most likely thing to happen is that they would. um what would be the most likely thing to happen is that they would probably work with us for a year or two, ask us to create some sort of a of a plan and with a timeline on how to reach the twenty percent goal. You know, if we told them, well, we'll meet, we'll reach the goal in twenty-five years, they'll probably come back and say, no, let's shorten that time period up. And we would probably work with them. And as long as we in fact are working toward that goal by programming and budgeting and doing storm ponds and and those sorts of things, they will probably leave us alone as long as we're meeting that goal. If we fail to follow that, then they could do judicial or judicial uh decrees or or other um, you know, fines, daily fines if we get to that point. Like I say, I don't expect them to do that unless unless we fail to work with them over a long period of time. I I don't expect them to come in tomorrow and all of a sudden say, Platteville, you you aren't meeting this goal. We're gonna fine you ten thousand dollars a day for every day that you're not complying. I'm sure they could, but I don't expect them to do that. But if we put it off, then I could see them doing that.
What if we, what if we would, I mean?
We don't have to do it here.
But what about to address it for putting a plan together on how, that we could say we are working towards it? Um, I would think that would offset that a little bit. I mean, if we were just thumbing our nose and saying, no, we're not doing that, or it's good enough or whatever. But with each of these projects, attention is being paid to that. I mean, so that the 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 pond thing, what I guess really it's twofold for me. Um, I'm not in agreement. And coming through the last budget was painful. I am not in favor of taking C I P money away from what we're projecting for two thousand and twenty-four. So as an offset for that, could could, is there a a a document, a one sheet that that we could follow that would um say, this is what our intent is, as more of an internal document that? And and I'm sure that you're aware of it with every project. I mean, be Delta Three, I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned that.
We're in, we don't, we have very little information at this point. Um it's difficult to uh make a uh decision based on zero information about how the D N R is likely to um address any deficiencies that they find in the audit that they conducted in the fall. Um but but I think it's reasonable to expect that this is the first audit with the first findings, that there would be um reasonable amount of time given to the city to come into compliance, particularly knowing the cost involved and um, you know, the the constraints that all municipalities are experiencing financially.
Today on the lead call, um there was great discussion about the bipartisan infrastructure law and the amount of um the amount of uh technical resources that are being hired with that money. So communities can borrow additional money to put in storms. I mean, it was like, okay, they're hiring, uh, what was it, sixteen people in community finance to help you with your financing plan. And they hired another two people in this and another two people there and another two people there. And the only people, the only communities that these could help are small rural communities. And small rural is one descriptor. It's not small, comma, rural, comma, hi- historically disadvantaged, it's small rural, which means you have to be a community under ten thousand people. Period. Small rural means under ten thousand. So we aren't even, I mean, so, yeah. I think they have so much work that they don't they don't know what they're gonna do. Howard, this pond was brought to us because the school district is doing, as you said, some buildings, some sports, some um parking lots. They will build a pond to serve the runoff, I'm gonna call it, of that development. That's part of their plan. They're going to be doing that regardless.
Correct.
So if we decide as as a city not to pursue at this time a larger pond, that really will not negatively impact them. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, like I said, i- if if we give them an answer by March first or no answer, then they will proceed with the plans as they are with their own small bio retention pond and and continue forward. It's just that this is, this would be an opportunity to get it done and get some cost sharing from from the school district. If they pay seventy-five thousand dollars to put in this pond, I don't see an incentive for them to do a cost share later with us two or three years down the road.
But but this amount, seventy-five thousand, is about twelve percent of the total cost. So it's not as, I mean, tw- it's, it's just around twelve percent of the projected costs.
To to clarify and and correct me, Howard, if I'm wrong, but I believe this was a city staff initiative and that we approached the school. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So the school didn't come to us first. We we looked into this because we saw it as an opportunity for potentially uh meeting the requirements of the D N R permit. Um while, you know, a project was already going on and the land was available. Uh and and so suddenly it's not that we would be turning down a gesture of goodwill or anything like that.
So what is, what is the cost of the pond?
We're we're estimating just under six hundred thousand dollars.
And and like Kathy, I hate to see us. I mean, basically, if we approve this, you don't get a two and a half ton truck, you don't get a snowball blower, you don't get an aerial bucket truck. Uh many of the other departments get nothing.
And fewer streets get built.
And yeah, and there's no grace, there's no so, yeah.
Will they build a pond in the same location where it's proposed?
No.
Another place.
Um, their their location would be uh up closer to the track area. Um, because that's where the new facilities that they're going to be putting in will go. And so they'll just put it just to the west of the brand new parking lot that they're putting in on that northwest side of the school.
Um, another question. First sentence. The D N R issued a stormwater permit for City of Platteville. So they issued only one permit that covers the whole city?
Correct.
Okay. And then my next question in this thing you're talking about here is what type, what's, what's the size of the pond? As far as how much water is it going to hold as far as a storm, which is a capacity storm? High amount of storm. So what was that gonna be?
Dan to help.
And my next question is, how much for water will that prevent from going down to Main Street?
It won't prevent it, it will delay it.
It'll delay it, but it it was a delay. Theoretically, it should help as far as lowering the level of water at Main Street.
That's correct. Yes, yes. As Howard has mentioned before.
So that that in theory, that should be a benefit as far as the Main Street area.
Correct, correct. So this pond will, I mean, why we looked at this pond is because of the total suspended solids removal. However, when you um suspend or slow water down to let the the solids basically, you know, settle out of it, you're slowing down the water. Um what you'll really see is that first flush, those one-year, two-year rain events, that's where you'll really see the decrease in flow because that's your, that's what we're designing our pond to do for the removal, eighty percent removal. Um, you're asking the size of the pond. It's gonna have a pond area of approximately fifty thousand square feet. So it's gonna be about a one acre area of actual water area for the permanent pool.
And and I was thinking, will the pond be a dug pond or would be a made pond?
It's gonna be a dug pond. We're gonna dig it down. So right now, our outlet is, are the existing culverts that go underneath uh Madison Street, right by the Stop and Go slash Quick Trip. And so we have to discharge into those culverts. And so we have to keep our permanent pool of water below those culverts so that the water can hold, can stay in there so it can come in, have a chance to settle out. So that when it does rain, basically like a septic syst, septic tank, dirty water comes in, clean water goes out. And so it'll be four to five feet below those culverts in that wet area down there.
It'll be permanently wet.
It'll be permanently wet.
Yes.
And this one will be a little bit different than the the Walmart pond. I know everybody thinks about, you know, that's, that was one of the first wet ponds built in the city of Platteville, and it sits on top of the hill. And there have been years where no rain and it goes dry. This will be different because that bottom area has natural springs in it and it's gonna be wet most of the time. Um in fact, we have to be careful where we put the pond at because there are some delineated wetlands in there. So this will be a little bit different than some of the other ponds in town where they're wet when it rains and then they may be wet for weeks afterwards. But then if we get an extended period of dry time, they dry out, which will help with the with the maintenance of it as well. When it goes wet, dry, wet, dry, wet, dry, wet, dry, it actually causes some internally erosion in the ponds.
At this time, what do you expect as our maximum precipitation?
Someone?
Yes.
Precipitation. In one rainfall, you mean, Ken, or what?
I mean, I, I live next to Harrison Park. And I've, I've seen Harrison Park with three major rains that have covered that whole Harrison Park.
Correct. Okay. So we're, we're, we're using our, you know, twenty-four hour rainfalls. And so when we run the design for the pond, do the final design, we go anywhere from the one-year rain event, rain, one-year twenty-four hour rain event, which is in the magnitude of two to three inches to the hundred year, which is getting up into the eight to nine inches. So that's, so we, so we, and what we do is we basically do a stage storage curve for each rain event that we print out. And that's what we have to submit to the D N R to determine, so that they understand how much water's coming in, how much water's going out. E, no, we're not designing for the eight to nine because then the pond wouldn't be fifty thousand square feet. It would probably be a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So we have to be realistic and we have to be, I mean, we're tight on budget, but when we start designing for one hundred year design storms, uh things are getting crazy expensive. And and area is an issue at that point in time, too. So what we will do is we will take our pre-existing flows for the one year through the hundred year. And then we will compare them. We'll build, we'll design the pond. Um and then we'll redo the the flows after the pond for the one year through the hundred year. And what you'll see is there'll be a drastic reduction in the one, two, five, ten, up to the twenty-five. And then there will still be a reduction for like the fifty and the hundred year, but it won't be as dramatic as for the lower storms. And that's just the, that's a combination of practicality and economics.
You said it's gonna be a dug pond.
Dug, dig, yep, dig it down in.
So wondering about as far as the dug pond, how soon are you gonna reach limestone? And water goes into limestone and so.
So if we were, if this, at some point in the future, if you were to proceed with this pond, we'd have to go take some test pits down there to find out the the depths of the limestone. And then what we have to do is if we are going to get within two feet of the limestone, we have to excavate out so that we have a two-foot clay liner in the bottom of the pond so that water does not go into the groundwater system.
As I was concerned that if it went into limestone, it may come out lower someplace than somebody's property.
Uh, the pond behind Walmart for Keystone Development, um we basically had to overblast that pond by two feet and hauling clay from the development to seal that pond up so that we do not do that.
Another question is about uh maintenance of the pond must be maintained and managed. So the pond, if if you don't, to me, the sequence is gonna be that the weeds will come in, the cattails will come in. And so the pond will tend to go to a marsh. City is supposed to then keep this as a water, open water? Or is this gonna be a marsh?
That's gonna kind of depend upon how much time you wanna spend on maintenance of it. It's not designed to be a marsh. It's designed to be a pond. Um and it's designed to be mowed and maintained. Um it's just a matter of how often it's mowed and maintained. It does. So what we do is we design this, um and we have um a five-foot depth for the pond. So when you have your permanent pool of water, you'll have, it'll be five feet deep and the the intent is for that five feet to allow sediment to build up over time. And then in, depending on how much upstream construction erosion there is, depends on how soon we'd have to excavate it out. Um if there's a lot of new development up above and there's no controls upstream, then we may have to clean, the city may have to clean it out in five to ten years. Um theoretically, because it's a gonna be, it's a developed watershed, um what we're picking up is we're picking up the salts and the sands from the streets. Um, you know, fine air particulates, that type of stuff.
And some people may bring up, what about mosquitoes? What about geese and so forth coming in?
Yep. With mosquitoes, um the pond size will, it'll be large enough, there'll actually be wave action to prevent the stagnant water. And that's the other benefit about it, this location, because there's going to be groundwater there. So it's gonna, it's gonna have a, the pool, the pool's not gonna dry out. And when the pool dries out and it goes stagnant, that's when we start having mosquitoes. Now geese, uh there's nothing, I mean, I, you know, I don't know what we can do to prevent geese. That's legal and humane.
Some cities have problems for them.
They do.
Dan, you mentioned that it is, it's gonna be wet. What, what kind of depth of water? I mean, I I would only assume that this would be fenced in. We're talking an area where there's kids.
Yes, um, yes, yeah. Howard contacted the school district and they're requiring it to be fenced in. Legally, they do not have to be fenced in because in the staff report, Howard mentions a safety shelf. So when you come down the bank of the of the pond, the what before, when you hit the the permanent pool of water, there is a ten-foot shelf in there, safety shelf. And that's, it drops one foot and ten feet. So it drops this much in ten feet. So that somebody comes down to the edge and they step into the water, they're not gonna step down and roll down the hill, you know, roll down the inner, the the inside of the pond. Um and then from there, it'll be down four to five feet below that level as well for the sediment. So this pond will be, you know, five feet deep approximately from the permanent pool. That's when it's not raining. When it rains, depending on the size of storm we have, there could be anywhere from additional foot to three to four feet of water in there for a total depth of, say, maybe eight to nine feet. It all depends on the final design. And, you know, how much, how much room we end up having for depth and everything. Yes. No, there'll be a drain. There'll be, there'll actually be three drains in this pond. You'll have your low flow, low rain, low frequency rain drain. That's gonna basically for the one, two, five year rain events, we'll have a larger one for the, you know, ten to twenty five events. And then actually, then there'll be an overflow for the larger events. Um, and then what we designed for the industry park pond, um, we actually also have a drain on a valve that we can actually drain the pond in the future and remove the sediment. So the industry park, the one that's by the, yep. We're skin. By, um, nope, by not, um, this was the property that Skinnell Cummins was gonna purchase.
Okay, so it's in the new part of the industry park.
By High Pro. Yep, the, there are.
By High Pro.
By High Pro. Yep, there's three ponds out there. The one along East Side Road is a dry bio retention pond. There's a small one in the middle, which is also a dry retention pond. And then the one that's west closest to High Pro, that's a wet pond.
Yes. Yep. They have, they have a requirement to maintain it and they have a requirement to um, remove sediment when if that uh, fills up. But that was also done back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five. Standards have changed. Um, and as Dan mentioned, that one, because of where it is and the conditions, it doesn't have a permanent pool of water necessarily. Um, so, yeah.
Who inspects it, right? Who inspects it?
Yeah, who's gonna, who's gonna require?
According to D N R, that's me. I'm the one who's supposed to be doing that in addition to everything else that I do, which doesn't really happen that much. Um, I I just don't have the time, so that's that's one of the items that's probably going to be a slap on the wrist for the city once their, once their uh, report comes out. Is we don't have, we don't do inspections as much as often as they would normally require.
The other issue is, is if Howard or anybody goes out there and finds an issue, is to actually have them fix the issue. There's nothing, there's no agreement between Walmart and uh, the City of Platteville that says you must do this if we tell you to with regards to the pond. Um, the D N R can come in and say something, but once again, there's no signed agreement between the D N R and Walmart either. Um, when we do our ponds, we take a piece of paper and we have the property owner say, yes, I will take care of this and we give that to the D N R. And now, two, three property owners later, and and I don't, I'm not saying about them in Walmart, but that's one of the issues that we talk about with routinely with D N R personnel is we have these ponds, you want us to inspect them, but if we find something wrong with them, how do we force somebody to clean them out? How do we force somebody to do this? Um, especially, it's a little bit different now that the city has their stormwater ordinances in place. So in two thousand, so everything pre two thousand and sixteen, there's no agreements, but two thousand and sixteen to now, Howard gets a signed agreement from the property owner that says, yes, you will do that. And yes, we will do the maintenance on it. But that's only the new ones in the last five or six years. And I, there's only been a handful of ponds put in since then.
And but still, there's no, it says, yes, I'm gonna do this, but there is no, there is no fine or anything if they don't.
Actually, one of the, actually, one of the conditions in that paperwork says that if they don't, the city has the right and authority to go in there and to do whatever maintenance is required and bill it back to them as a special charge.
But unfortunately, it's only from two thousand and sixteen coming forward.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions about that? Okay, then, um, I would remind council members that we have a meeting tomorrow night at four thirty. It's in the police conference room. You should have a packet. Um, or, and if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, I'm looking for one motion. Okay, we have a motion by Kathy, a second by Lynn to adjourn. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Cobb?
Yes.
Motion carries.